Shout out to For His Glory Clothing for sponsoring today's video. Man, I absolutely love this shirt that I'm wearing right now from their collection. And I love how it lets me rep my faith without saying a word. They've got a ton of dope Christian designs that makes a statement and it starts conversations. So if you're looking for quality faith-based apparel that's clean, that's dope, and it looks good, then check them out by using my exclusive link in the description box down below. And when you use my link, you're gonna be getting 15% off your entire order just for supporting the mission. So check out For His Glory Clothing and thank you for sponsoring today's video. What up, what up, what up, what up, what up? How y'all doing this evening? What is going on? How y'all doing? Welcome in, welcome in, welcome in. Thank y'all for tuning in, man. Good evening, good morning, good afternoon, good evening. How y'all doing this evening? Man, it has been a busy day. Let me do a quick mic check, hope to video check, audio check, mic check one, two. All right, all right, good, good, good. Salute to you, Junior. What up, what up, what up, man? Thank you so much for being here, man. I appreciate you for rocking out with me, man. Thank you so much for tuning in. Ah, man, welcome on in, welcome on in. I appreciate each and every one of y'all, man. How was y'all's day today? Audio good, camera good? Thank you, thank you. All right, thank you for keeping me, thank you for keeping me up to date, man. Thank you so much, man. How was y'all's day? Good, good, good. Camera quality is good? Thank you, thank you, man. I hope, I hope I fix a couple of things, man, because I know last time we had a little bit of a shaky situation when it came down to our camera, man. But I was trying out some different things. So just to give you some pretext, my, my PC that I stream on, I'm fully connected to the computer. I mean, like, I'm fully connected to the internet, so I'm not on wifi. Like, my internet system is like right here, like, right there. I can literally visually see it from my office, right? And my PC is connected like ethernet cable. So I'm getting like the full amounts, like I do speed checks and stuff like that. Like, I gotta have it for work. I'm getting the, I get the full amount of internet for my PC. So whenever I see like, you know, lagginess or anything like that, it worries me because I'm just like, my PC shouldn't be slowing down, like not, there's no way. So I appreciate y'all for keeping me accountable, accountable on that. So I'm just always trying to fix that, man. But how y'all doing this evening, man? Day was wonderful? Awesome, man, that's good to hear, that's good to hear. Ms. Freckles, how you doing this evening? Thank you for being here, I appreciate you so much. I know that there is a, another particular stream, you know, unlisted stream going on right now within our other community, but at the same time, I still had to keep it at this time because, you know, I still gotta rock out. And I don't want to keep y'all here too long this evening. Yo, yo, what's going on, Tech Coach, man? Thank you so much, Tech Coach Ralph, I appreciate you so much, man. Appreciate you so much. Busy with a lot of videos today for, for photography course I'm taking, man. That's dope. That's so dope, man. Awesome, man, I might have to hit you up, man. I might, I might need some shots, big dog, might need some shots, man. What's going on, man? I appreciate y'all for coming in here, man. So welcome into tonight's stream, man. So tonight's gonna be a little bit different. And I know I've done a different stream before, whatever the case may be, but it's been a lot going on, man. There's still things that's just going on like crazy, crazy in this world, right? To the point where I started to get a little bit overwhelmed. And what do I mean by that? Well, for those who don't know, if you've been here before, welcome in. But if you're new to, new to my channel, you know, I try to do, you know, Christian-based content in regards to, you know, speaking my authentic words, speaking and teaching people about the love of Jesus Christ, and also about my faith journey, but also at the same time reacting to things in the culture. And I'm gonna be real with you, man. Culture's been culturing for the past week or so. It's, the culture has been culturing, all right? Can I get an amen about that? And from a content creator standpoint, because at the end of the day, you know, I am still a content creator, you know, I know a lot of people were just like, oh, I'm just on here, you know, preaching or, but at the end of the day, I'm just gonna be real with you. I am a Christian and I am, I do believe in my faith, but I, I still am a content creator. So therefore, I have to be in tune with things that's going on from the algorithm perspective, research perspective and all that stuff. And with a lot of things that was going on, man, my whole mind was just, like, I started to get to that point where I was just like, man, this is stupid, I'm annoying. Like, this is annoying, I'm done with all of this. Like, I was about to crash out, and I know we spoke about crashing out before, but I was literally about to crash out because it's just so much going on, so much craziness that's going on. I don't even have to say it, but it's just, it can make you crash out internally in your own area. So I wanted to take a pause, like, you know, just decompression, just being like, gotta get back into the Word. And I felt like it was, it was good to do tonight in order to just, um, just to have a live stream, just to have a full Bible study session. Because I'll admit, I didn't get a chance to make it to Bible study this week because I had some, uh, I had some news that, you know, that I had this week, and I've been pretty busy with work. I will talk about that a little bit later in this live stream. But, um, yeah, man, I just, I needed to have some Bible study and what way to do some Bible study, but to do it on stream with y'all, right? So instead of doing any segments, this is just gonna be a full Bible study session. And I hope that y'all appreciate this, and it may not be too long, but I just wanted to gather together as friends, Junior, salute to you, Tech Coach Ralph, Ms. Freckles, I appreciate y'all. I'm not looking for, you know, clicks and views and all that stuff tonight, man. I just wanted to decompress, get our Bibles open, hearts open, minds open, and just decompress. Because it's been a lot going on, man, with things going on in, in politics, things going on in our world, and people choosing sides, man. This is truly Captain America Civil War, all right? I don't know if I'm Team Iron Man or Team Captain America by now, but I'm just, I just wanna be Team God, and I just wanna be like, I just wanna stay in my Word, you know what I'm saying? I'm clutching, I'm clutching my Bible, all right? Just like I did before, so. So I would say that I'm guilty that I didn't get a chance to do Bible study this week. So I wanted to do Bible study with y'all today. So if you're watching live, man, go ahead and let me know in the chat, man. You know, how was y'all's week been? Do you, are you feeling the same exact way? Are you feeling like the things that's going on in this, in this world currently right now? And, you know, we don't have to get into in-depth of conversation because we, we kinda already know. But at the same time, it's just like, are you willing to sit, step back and just be like, man, we just need to take a pause? Need to take a pause and be focused in our Word so that we can be clear, we can be clear-minded, so. And that's what it's all about, man. I just want to create a community right here in the comments. I want to create a community here with y'all to the point that we don't get so focused on reactions and so focused on what this person did and what that person did and, and, you know, doing this and doing that and just, honestly, I'll just be honest, from a content creator standpoint, it can become very overwhelming. And when I become overwhelmed, then I feel like it's not coming from God. So that's why I just said, no segments tonight. We just gonna be strictly in the Word. And also, I have some new Bible study, uh, a new Bible study, um, software that I'm using that I wanted to use with y'all. So, hey, look at that, man, we, we just gonna do it together, so. So tonight's Bible study, man, we were just gonna be talking about, where is God when I'm hurting? That's just gonna be the Bible study conversation for the night. Where is God when I'm hurting? And we're gonna be going through three particular scriptures and also looking through it in this new Bible study software on, that I pretty much am using. So this is gonna be the first time I'm using this, so we doing it live, right? We doing it together, all right? So, but where is God when I'm hurting? Because let's just be real. Life has been crazy thus far. I'm just gonna say it, life has been crazy, whether it's been in your personal life, whether it's been in your work life, whether it's been in your social life, culture life, whatever. It's been a little bit heavy so far. So sometimes our pain makes us wonder if God is like kinda far, like he doesn't necessarily hear us or he doesn't necessarily understand where we're coming from. So that's why I wanted to answer this question with particular scripture. We gonna have some studying tonight. But the Bible's always gonna paint a different picture, whether we agree with it or disagree with it. It's always gonna paint a different picture. So it's gonna show us in our hurt, God is closer than we think. And I say that a lot, but a lot of people take that for granted. Whenever we're within our hurt, God is closer than we think. So I want you to keep that in mind as we particularly go through this Bible study session tonight. And again, may not be too long, but I at least wanna rock out with y'all. I appreciate each and every one of y'all for being here tonight. But I wanna rock out with y'all on a Bible study tip. We're gonna have some Q and A because I heard that a certain someone, not naming any names, but his name starts with a tech and last name, and last name starts with a Ralph, had some smoke for me. So at the end or in between our Bible study sessions, we're gonna have Q and A. So if there is a question that you wanted to ask from a biblical perspective, from a culture perspective, and how it relates and stuff like that, put it in the chat and we gonna get to it and we gonna try to, you know, answer these questions because I want this to be a little bit more intimate, a little bit more conversational interaction while we're going through the Bible. Amen? So before we get into anything, before I read y'all's comments, we gotta start off on some prayer, all right? We gotta pray, all right? We gonna open this up. So, dear Heavenly Father, we thank you. We thank you for life, health, and strength. Thank you for this time together. Thank you for everything. Every person tuning into this live right now, thank you for every person that's listening to this on the replay. And thank you for everybody who's even listening to this years past. Lord, we invite you into this presence. We invite you into this stream. Open our hearts, open our minds, open our bodies in order to accept your Word tonight, dear God, as we go through scripture and as we look at scripture and as we read different passages in order to understand your will, dear God. We understand there's a lot of things that's going on in this world, but dear God, just help us to clear our minds, to stay focused, even if it's just a little bit, even if it's just a little bit of time. Help us to stay focused in your Word in order for us to stay focused on you. Because dear God, we're hurting. We're hurting in our own lives, we're hurting in our world, we're hurting in our culture to the point that we need you more than ever. And we truly wanna, we truly want to feel your presence because we know that you're close. And the best way to do it is to be in our Word. So help us to understand, help us to have conversational pieces tonight to the point that we walk away from this better everyday Christians. In the magic, in the magic, in the miraculous name of Jesus that we pray. We appreciate you and we love you. Thank you so much, amen. Amen, I couldn't get that word out, miraculous. Because God is awesome and miraculous, amen. I'm gonna check the chat before we get into it, man, we get into a little introduction. Thank y'all for being here tonight, thank y'all so much, man. Yep, there's an unposted stream, but the time slot was already taken for the stream. Yep, man, I appreciate y'all, man. Appreciate y'all for rocking out for me, man. I'm here for the title, thank you. Thank you. Always looking out for me, always looking out for me. Uh, culture is trash. You're right about that, you're right about that. I'm not feeling overwhelmed, but I do feel the shift taking place. It, it really is a shift, like, it may not be like an overwhelming field, but there's a shift that's going on. And it truly feels like something's going on to the point that, ah, man, we gotta, we gotta, we gotta realign our hearts, realign our minds, so. Uh, I'm overwhelmed and hanging on by a thread and listen, we all right there, but listen, we gonna hang on together. We gonna hang on together and we can't, we can't, can't let you fall. Can't let you fall. God AI, not yet. I'm just kidding, man, I'm just kidding. Oh, man, um, I got California smoke for Rob Brown. And listen, you gonna have your time tonight because we gonna get through this Bible study. We gonna have conversations, we gonna talk it out, and we gonna have some Q and A. So you gonna have your opportunity to have your, have your smoke for Rob Brown, like, like, like I did something to you. Amen? Amen, oh, man. Salute to my guy Mitch Mitch, what's going on, man? How you doing, Mitch? Where you been at? I'm saying, I'm saying like my hometown. Man, where you been at? Where you be at? Oh, man, for those who don't know, I'm from Charleston, South Carolina. And for those who have never been to Charleston, South Carolina, there is a dialect down there that's called Gichi. Unfortunately, I don't speak, uh, Gichi, I don't have a strong Gichi accent, but I can understand it, like gullah Gichi type of conversations per se. Only when I'm upset, then the accent kinda comes out, so I don't wanna get upset, ever. But that's what they say down there, you know, they, you know, we, we have a different type of way of saying, where you been at? You know, what you doing? Who over there, you know, like, all those particular things? But I can't, I can't speak it in our particular dialect because, um, I speak too proper, unfortunately. Well, not unfortunately, that's a good thing, I speak too proper. I gotta speak in boardrooms and stuff like that, so. But yo, my God Mitch Mitch, thank you, man, for being here. So listen, tonight, this is how tonight's gonna go, okay? We're gonna be having a walkthrough on three key scriptures, okay? And I'm gonna, I'm gonna let y'all know what those three key scriptures are. Then I'm gonna break it down by verse by verse. We're gonna go verse by verse, we're even gonna go before and after so we can kinda understand what these verses are before, what the context is, and then how it's gonna be broken down afterwards as well, too. And if I skip over anything, please let me know because just like how I'm learning this new platform in real time, I'm also learning how to do Bible study properly in real time. Because I want this to be fruitful for you and I want this to be fruitful for others in the future as well, too. Amen? So we're gonna be breaking it down verse by verse, we're gonna share insights, share some stories, which you've learned as well, too, because this is gonna be interactive and in between. And I'm also gonna pause, you can drop any type of comments in the chat, your thoughts in the comments in the chat, how we're gonna be going through this. This is gonna be a straight-up Bible study, so if you got your Bibles, go ahead, get it out. If you got it on your phone, you, hey, if you got your Bible like this, or I got some other Bibles up here, hey, get it out because this is where we gonna be at. No commentary, we can ask Q and A questions about some segments or commentaries that I've had or reactions that I've had this week or last week, but we literally gonna be in the Word tonight. Amen, because we need it. We need it. So then at the end, after we're finished with everything, we're gonna have time for Q and A. We're gonna have time for Tech Coach Ralph to have smoke with me because he made it evidently known that he's got smoke for me. And then also, I wanna share some good news with y'all because as a family, I feel like we're family and I truly wanna share this good news with y'all, uh, and then how it's gonna work out for our, my particular channel. Amen? So this isn't just me talking to you, this is actually us studying God's Word together. So I hope that you got your Bibles out, got your notebooks out, and then also your comments, and we gonna dive on in. Amen? Amen, let's go ahead and get into it. So I'm using this new platform called Logos. I don't know if y'all have ever heard of Logos, I've never used it before. But one of my good friends who happens to be a pastor, put me on Logos and told me to try it out. And I haven't tried it out before, so I was just like, you know what? When I have this Bible study, we gonna go through it, we gonna try it out, we gonna see how it is. So I am using Logos, this is a, a new platform for me, so, you know, baby steps, okay? But the first scripture we're gonna be diving into is gonna be 2 Corinthians, chapter 12. So let's go to 2 Corinthians. Amen, where is it? Chapter 12. And I'm gonna have the King James Version on the left side, and I'm gonna have the Christian Standard Bible Version on the left side. And if there's another version that you would like for me to highlight, please let me know because I would like to make sure that we're highlighting, you know, each version. I'm doing King James Version for my dog Junior Large, salute to you, man, salute to you. So let's get into here, um, so I'm gonna keep this one right there. 2 Corinthians, chapter 12. And we're gonna go to verses seven through 10, that's what we're gonna be focusing on. That's what we're gonna be focusing on. Amen? So I'm gonna go ahead and read this from the King James Version right here. "And lest I should be exalted above measure through the abundance of the revelations, there was given to me a thorn in the flesh, the messenger of Satan, to buffet me lest I should be exalted above measure. For this thing I besought the Lord thrice, that it might depart from me. And he said unto me, My grace is sufficient for thee, for my strength is made perfect in weakness. Most gladly, therefore, I will rather glorify my infirmities, that the power of Christ may be, may rest upon me." Verse 10 says, "Therefore I will take pleasure in infirmities, in reproaches, in necessities, in persecutions, in distresses, for Christ's sake. For when I am weak, then I am strong." Amen? That's verse seven through 10. And even if we were to look at it from the Christian Standard Bible, that verse nine is across the board. "My grace is sufficient for you, for my power is perfected in weakness." Amen? Let me check the chat and see if anybody's got anything. Side note, a person condemned me for using ESV before, and I was so confused why it mattered. So from what I've learned, and y'all correct me if I'm wrong, those in the chat who knows a little bit better than me, King James Version and even NIV to an extent is like, those are the versions that are closest to the pure. So it's like a scale, and I might do a video on this where it's like, uh, King James Version is closest to the, the true, I guess, like the true text written back in the day. Or there's other, other texts like the Greek and stuff like that, that's closer to how it was written or written or the Hebrew. And then ESV, CSB is more like study versions. So me personally, I use both. I use both in a sense where I, I've grew up on the King James, I know the King James, I, you know, read the King James from a study perspective to understand how it is, understand like, you know, the King James Version itself. But then there's gonna be aspects of it where I'm just like, all right, big dog, like, amen, shh, it's a little over my head, okay? I, I don't understand that, I'm, I'm slow, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm just, I'm gonna say it, I'm slow. So I'll pick up the CSB at the same time, I'll have them both open at the same time, like how it is on the screen or even both Bibles, or even the ESV so that I can kinda understand it. So it's all about understanding in a sense, so. Don't let somebody condemn you for having a version that helps you understand in a sense. But as long as you kinda have both, if you're studying, it really does help. It's been helping me, so. I hope that helps out for you. Wasn't the King James, uh, Version written in the 1600s? That's a good question, that is a good question, let me see. When was King James Version written? 1611. 1611. There's your answer. There's your answer. But King James Version is very popular and it's, it's the version that everybody goes to. And again, we can have a conversation about that, but from my understanding of how I was taught from my pops, who's a pastor and other pastors, it's good to have multiple versions for multiple understandings. Amen? So, verses seven through 10. For those who don't know, uh, chapter 12 is talking about sufficient grace in a sense. Paul calls out his struggles, saying that is a thorn in the flesh. How many of y'all had a thorn in the flesh? You ever went on a rose bush or you were picking out a rose or you were picking out a rose? Or you probably had some roses for your significant other and you actually got stuck by a thorn? I've, I've gotten stuck by a thorn. It ain't fun. It's not fun. But that's what, that's what Paul calls his struggle. That's what he calls it. Where is it? Right here. So if we go to verse 10. He calls it even on the CSB, a thorn in the flesh. All right. I'm gonna highlight that. We don't know exactly what it was in a sense. What about a thorn in the cacti? I've never had a thorn in the cacti and I don't wanna. Nope. So we truly don't know what exactly it was. All right. But what matters is how God responded to Paul. Because Paul prayed three times for God to remove it, three times in a sense. That tells me something. Amen? Even Paul, the apostle who wrote a lot of the New Testament, he even wrestled with unanswered prayers, just like how we wrestle with so many unanswered prayers on our day to day basis. Even on a weekly basis, on a monthly basis, there's probably prayers right now that you've prayed for and God hasn't answered you yet. So I don't want you to think that you're not the only one because even Paul experienced this. Even Paul experienced this in the New Testament. He wrestled with unanswered prayers to the point that he prayed three times for God to remove this quote unquote thorn in the flesh. But God's answer wasn't the deliverance that he wanted. Amen? It was actually dependence. It was actually dependence. So again, let's look right here. My grace, this is Jesus's response. "My grace is sufficient for thee, for my strength is made perfect in weakness." Let's highlight that in green. We gonna keep that one in green. So here's the truth, family. For everybody who's in there, I appreciate each and every one of y'all for tuning in. Here's the truth. Sometimes God doesn't want to remove the thorn and I'm gonna tell you why. God doesn't want to remove the thorn because he's using it to teach you to lean on him. Just, just like that. He's teaching us a lesson to lean on him. Y'all know that song Lean On Me? Lean on me. When you're not strong, I'll be your strength. I'll help you care. Man, my bad. I'm an old school head. My bad. But it's kind of like that song. God, like, listen, God is telling you to lean on him. And a lot of us don't want to do that. A lot of us want instant gratification. A lot of us want instant gratification and we don't want to be grounded in him. Amen? We want relief, but he wants relationship. He wants your relationship. We want the comfort and he wants character. And in our weakness, his strength shines the brightest. Amen? Junior said, uh, not junior, uh, let's see here. Um, Tech Coach Ralph was, said, was probably a TCR thorn, probably. That's a hurtful thorn. Oh, that thorn hurts. Y'all ever had a TCR thorn? It's like, it's like one of those thorns that's just annoying. It's an annoying thorn. But the crazy part about it is it, it stings to the point that it annoys you. But that TCR thorn, it actually gets you up. Like, like you get stung by, you just like, ow. Ah, I gotta, I gotta get moving. So I don't know. It's crazy, man. Like it's a hurtful, annoying thorn, but it actually gets you motivated. I don't, it's weird. It's a weird feeling, man. So I don't know if a lot of y'all are ready for the TCR thorn. It's crazy. They hurt really bad. Yeah, that cacti. I don't, I don't want to feel it. I don't want to feel it. I don't want to feel it. See, yeah, see? You're no thorn, even if you wanted to be. Listen, listen, Ms. Freckles. I'm gonna tell you right now, that TCR thorn. Junior said, Matthew 17, 21, "Howbeit this kind goeth not out but by prayer and fasting." Let's look at it. Let's look at it. We gonna pick King James for you, big dog. Let's do Matthews. Forgive me. Again, I'm still trying to learn this one. I am still trying to learn this particular, uh, program. Matthew 17. Amen? And we gonna look at verse 21. "Howbeit this kind goeth not out but by prayer and fasting." Amen? Amen. And you also put in there, oh, you put the full thing. This is why I don't read other versions because they take certain verses out. Well, let's test that out. Let's test it out. I'm gonna do, uh, English Standard Version. Oops. Yep. Shout out to Ms. Freckles. We gonna do English Standard Version. We gonna do 17. And we gonna come down to verse 21. Let's see here. Well, your boy is blind. Is that 17? Yep. Gotcha. Okay. So it's crazy. So we gonna start right here, verse 19. So I can see the 19, but I don't see the 21 because it goes right here to 22. Again, I'm still trying to get used to this software. This is a pretty interesting software. It's very intricate. It's very intricate. But we gonna look at this one right here. "Then the disciples came to Jesus privately and said, why could we not cast it out? He said to them, because of your little faith, for truly I say to you, if you have faith like a grain of mustard seed, faith like a mustard seed, you will say to this mountain, move from here to there and it will move and nothing will be impossible for you." So I get what you're saying on that because they do, I get what you're saying, at least with verse 21, because they don't talk about the prayer and the fasting. I do get that. So let me see here. Uh, so this is a reference to Acts 13, 21. So this talks about the life of Jesus. Yeah, I gotta, I'm gonna look more into this about why they removed this in this particular, um, in this particular version or even in another version. But I do know in this Logos platform, they do tell you why they remove certain things or why they rewarded certain things. So there's a reason why, but I do get what you're saying. I appreciate you for pointing that out. Amen? Uh, the thorn keeps us grounded to him. Sometimes we get, we get through, we get through minded and think we can do it on our own. Amen. That's true. That's true. Leave me alone. Leave me alone. See, this, this is why you being a TCR thorn right now. Leave me alone. Cut it out. Stop it. Get some help. Oh, man. Uh, singing was definitely not your good. It's not. It's not. So, be thankful that I sung for you, sung for y'all. All right. Amen? I don't sing. I don't sing. So I want y'all, I want to illustrate this as we go back to, uh, 2 Corinthians. Think about it this way. I want you to think of a cracked clay jar. If you put a light inside that particular jar, the cracks are where the light shines out, right? So if you have like a clay jar that's a little bit cracked and stuff like that, and you put like a candle in there or some type of light, you're gonna see light shining through the cracks in a sense. So in that same way, your weakness becomes the places where God's power is most visible. If you think about it from that perspective. So I want y'all to understand this and I want y'all to tell me, when was a time that you felt God's grace was enough for you? Was there a time in your life? Was there a time even recently where you just like, you had to take a stop? You had to take a step back and be like, I need to rely on God even in my weakness? Because we've all had that. We've all experienced that. I'm gonna tell you that I experienced that. I'm gonna tell you about that in a minute. And if you've ever experienced God carrying you through that particular situation and it's something that you couldn't handle on your own, just, just let me know. But like, I'll give you an example. And I know Tech Coach Ralph, uh, we, we talked about this. I was going for a particular promotion at my, at my job, uh, that was earlier in the year. And of course I had to interview for it. I had to, uh, you know, go for it. It was a management position. And, uh, unfortunately I didn't get that particular position. And I felt, man, I was, I felt the sting. I felt like, hey, man, am I not good enough? What are you talking about? I've been here for years. Am I not good enough? And, uh, yeah, you're right. I was pouting. You're right. I was pouting. I was, I was salty. I was salty. I prayed to God. He knew my heart. He knew that it would be, you know, beneficial. All these things, you know, uh, I've been faithful. I feel like I've been faithful and, yeah, I didn't get the, I didn't get the position. I got over, I wouldn't say overlooked, but, uh, it was between me and another person and I wasn't selected and I, I pouted. I felt some type of way. I felt like, I'm not good enough. I felt like God, I was like, God, like, for real? Like, what did I do? What did I do? And I, and, and I prayed about that multiple times, more than Paul. More than Paul praying three times. I prayed about, I was like, God, I literally was just like, God, like, what did I do? Like, like, give me some type of sign, like, what did I do to deserve this? And I know we've all been there. I know I'm not the only one. We've all been there where, like my mom was saying, like, you put your eggs in one basket and all of a sudden that basket drops and breaks and all your eggs are broken. I prayed and I didn't get it, but I still kept going on. I, I just say, you know what? It wasn't for me, but I still wanted to know why. So months and months went by. And now, with our, within my particular workspace, we're expanding to offer new opportunities within our department, uh, for more advanced, or not for more advancement, but also for, um, let's just say new departments in order to increase our, um, digital integrations in a sense. Because we're going in a direction, uh, within my particular industry that we need to be more cognizant of, you know, integrating more AI, integrating more other technologies in order to make sure that, uh, from our particular industry, and I work in the healthcare industry, that we are, um, going in the direction that needs to be done in order for us to, you know, make sure that we are utilizing particular technologies in a sense. And so therefore they needed to create a new team. Well, just recently, they asked me to lead that team in a manage, in a, in a high senior management role. No interviews. Know nothing. They called me in. They told us what we're gonna be doing. And they say, we already know who we wanted. You. And I didn't rely and I felt, I felt bad. I wanted, when I left that office, after having a conversation, you know, giving my thanks and stuff like that, being happy and congratulations. So yes, I am in a senior level position right now. So I do have a different position. Man, I broke down because I felt like I disrespected God. I felt like I didn't, I disrespected the grace that he gave to me. I felt like I, uh, shortchanged him because he was just like, wait. He was telling me to wait and I didn't want to wait. I wanted to know why. I wanted to know why I was overlooked. I wanted to know why I wasn't chosen for that other thing. Because he was like, cause you got this thing coming up, which is gonna be better for you. You just don't know it yet. So I need for you to be patient. And I broke down because I felt like I wasn't depending on him. So, um, yeah, I, I know this feeling. I know this struggle and I know I'm not the only one. Happy moment, of course. Awesome. Happy moment. You can even tell, you, man, listen, I, I sent a message to Tech Coach Ralph and I told him about it. And his, uh, and his first response was, do you know AI? Instead of saying congratulations, I can't stand them, man. He told him, I know TCR. I did. Literally, literally in the back of my mind. I was like, man, I got TCR on my side. I'm gonna be straight. I'm gonna lead this team. We gonna be good. We gonna be straight. I was washing dishes, but congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, man. Like, thank you. And it's, and it's, 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 man, it's crazy. It's crazy because that's why I wanted to highlight this particular verse and see like, I'm not the only one. I can't be the only one. It can't just be me in a sense. We've all asked God, why not me? We've all been there and we've just been like, God, you overlooked me. And we didn't understand. He's literally telling us, my grace is sufficient for thee. So you have to depend on me. Trust, like full trust. And even I'm telling you right now, I, I didn't full trust. I didn't. So, I want to know. Like, I, I feel like I'm not the only one. Let me know in the comments. Let me know in the comments, man. Let me know in the chat. Amen? Let me go through the chat for a little bit and then we gonna go to scripture two. We gonna go to scripture two. Um, congratulating, thank you. Thank you. And finally, this is exactly what I said. Congratulations. Do you know how to use? See? Exactly. Like, how you gonna say congratulations and then come back? Do you even know how to use AI? Like, oh, like, come on. Like, for real? What kind of thing? That is a true Tech Coach Ralph response right there. Hey, congratulations. Do you even know how to do the job? I can't with you, man. I can't, man. I'm not fully trusting either and I feel like a kid with their arms crossed waiting for my turn. And I, I'm right there. I'm right there. We're always there, but we can always do better. We can always do better and it's, it's no shame in admitting that. It's no shame in admitting that. We, we all are right there understanding. It's just like, hey, man, well, God, why you do that to me? And then when something happens, it's just like, oh, God, my bad. God, my bad, I'm sorry, man, I, I, I didn't have faith in you like I should have, man, that's not, that's, that's not right, man, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I never really care. On that note, let's segue to the next verse, let's segue to Scripture two, man. We gonna segue to Scripture two, so I want y'all to open up to Psalms 34. Let's go up here to Psalms, chapter 34. Got the wrong one open? Oh, it opened up, okay. So that's one thing I learned about this program, if you open up another, if you open up another book, it'll keep that open versus, uh, closing that accordion and opening up the new book, but it's neither here nor there, maybe it's the setting. I'll figure this out, Psalms 34. And we're gonna go down to verse 18. And I'm also going to do that over here in the, you know what? From Miss Freckles, I got you. We gonna do ESV. We gonna do ESV for you. Amen. Psalms 34. See, it did it again. I already closed Matthews. Did it again. What's going on? Alright, Psalms 34. And we gonna go down to verse 18. I wanna keep both of these side by side. So King James Version states, "The Lord is nigh unto them that are of broken heart, and saveth such as be of a contrite spirit." Now, I wanna read the ESV because it says something different. The Lord is near to the brokenhearted and saves the crushed in spirit. Brokenhearted. Crushed in spirit. So, right here, we gonna go right there, and then we're gonna highlight, amen, we gonna highlight this one in green, alright, cool. So we gonna keep these both right here. And you can look at the similarities in this, but at the same time, it's still using the same two words, broken heart, brokenhearted. Saveth, saves. Now, notice it doesn't say, God is near the strong, right? Notice it doesn't say, God is near the successful. Notice it doesn't say, God is near the people who have it all figured out. Like, you got it all put together. It says he's near the brokenhearted. That means your tears aren't wasted, it's never gonna be wasted, your sighs are never ignored, even in sleepless nights, even in times when your mind is wandering about, if this is gonna happen for you, you know, are my prayers being answered and stuff like that? Even in those restless nights, every cry you didn't have the words for, guess what? God was right here. Amen. Amen. Now, the Hebrew word for, let's just say, where it is, near, I wanna highlight near. So the Hebrew word for near means close enough to touch. Let's see here, let's go to the Hebrew, that's why I wanted to highlight this one right here. So it says lema. And looking that up, let's see here. Nope, that's not gonna do it. I gotta figure out this software. Okay, so that pulls up, okay, gotcha, I just figured that out, it pulls up the Greek, awesome. Okay, so the Greek word for near means to be close enough to touch, okay? So that means when your spirit feels like crushed, like the weight of everything is just being crushed, God doesn't stand back and just watch you, he actually steps closer. He steps in close. He's always near. He is near. Let me see, can I get this open a little bit more? Bible Word Study. Let's see what that is. Okay, so it tells you how many times it uses the word near, and what are their nearest relatives to it? So you got nearest, related, relative, gotcha, and then where you see near in other examples. Gotcha, okay. Yeah, I'm gonna figure out this, I am definitely gonna figure this one out. Salute to y'all. So yeah, so the Greek, or the Hebrew word, excuse me, for near is lema. Says near, nearby, close, closest, and you see how many times the translations of where it's being used in different versions and different cases, amen. So, I want y'all to think of a parent holding their crying child, because I got a kid. My kid is always crying, he's, he's two years old, you know, he's, he's in toddler mode, but even when he was younger, he was crying, man, so always crying. Think of a parent holding their crying child. They don't lecture the child, they don't stand across the room and just tell them to figure it out. Well, depending on the type of parenting you got, okay? Cuz my, my kid is literally in toddler mode, and sometimes he just kinda, you know, flails and be like, like, he goes crazy sometimes, so I just, sometimes I just gotta be like, like, for real, I literally just put my hands up and just be like, man, listen, I ain't got time for that. I ain't got time for your temper tantrums, but think about that, think of a parent holding their crying child. Even if your child is crying, even if my kid is throwing a temper tantrum and doing the, you know, two-year-old toddler thing, regardless of me walking away, I don't walk too far. I'm still near enough in order to either embrace him or have some type of correction. That's what God does with us when we're hurting, when we're going through something. God draws us near in order to embrace us. So if you believe God is near for you tonight, man, I just want y'all to understand this. And if you don't believe that God is near, I want you to understand that God is near. He truly is near you, so I want y'all to declare that in faith together as we talk about this in the conversation, in the chat. Like, there are moments in our lives that we always feel like, man, God just ain't here, man, like, he's, he's not answering my prayers, he's just, I'm hurting too much, man, why is he letting me hurt? But again, we go back to Psalms 34, verse 18. "The Lord is nigh unto them that are of broken heart, and saveth such as be of a contrite spirit." He saves the crushed in spirit. He saves the crushed in spirit, I repeat again, he saves the crushed in spirit. So the time will come. The time will definitely come. Tech Coach Ralph said, my boss talks to me about promotion, and I'm like, yeah, that's cool. Hey, man, you your own boss, man, you, you the biggest boss. Pause. Thirty subs for 2K, shh, amen. We working, man, we getting there, man, I appreciate y'all, man, if you hadn't, and if you had, man, for those who are looking at this, man, do me a favor, hit that like button, man, make sure you get the likes up, make sure you hit the subscribe. I appreciate you, man, we, we moving, man, we working, and we working, and it's all because of y'all. It's all because of y'all, I'm just gathering a community of like-minded people that are going in the same direction. Amen. Tech Coach Ralph talks to Miss Freckles and says, you need community people going in the same direction as you, and that's what we doing, we all going in the same direction. We are all going in the same direction together. I'm just slower than some of y'all. I'm slow, man. I gave mine a spanking last night, and it broke my heart, oh, man, I know that feeling. Oh. Man, I don't like disciplining my child, but sometimes, amen. Spare the rod, man, spare the rod, so, so Tech Coach Ralph, that is exactly what I need, a sapping tin, yep. And that's why we here, man, it, it breaks my heart. It breaks my heart, but listen, as a, as a man, gotta do what I gotta do. Gotta do what I gotta do. This is how it is. Is it bad, I feel crushed because I want to figure out how to serve the way he did, but it's impossible? That's a good question. So I'm gonna put it like this. And I'm gonna read this next one, um, we talked about the Bible and serving God after the spanking, that's, that's good. Uh, I'm teaching my, I'm teaching my kid Bible verses now, and he's only two years old, so I'm trying to, trying to instill that into his life, amen. Is it bad, I feel crushed because I want to figure out how to serve the way he did, but it's impossible? No. I don't think it's bad, but at the same time, I don't want you to, um, how can I put this? Kill yourself, or kill your, your mind, body, and soul trying to be, let's just say, be like God, and at the sense, God is God, like, Jesus, God, like, we can, we can strive and do our best to be like them, but at the same time, we won't ever be them, in a sense. So we are going to mess up, we are going to sin, we are sinful creatures, but at the same time, having true repentance is the, is, is what he died for, in order for us to have repentance, and then truly turn away from the things that we don't wanna do anymore. It reminds me of a, um, it reminds me of like some pastors that I knew back in my hometown. And these pastors were literally like, hey, man, like, you talk about sports, it's demonic. You talk about, you know, anything outside of God, anything outside of Christianity, if you ain't bout them scriptures, you go to the football game, you demonic, like, it was some straight up, like, they were some, those were true Bible thumpers that I ran into, amen. And it started to ruin relationships, and I'm not trying to say it was a bad thing, but also at the same time, it was just that when their sins are called out, and when the things, when they messed up, or when they, uh, slipped up, when it came down to serving people with kind-heartedness, with compassion, with grace, you know, these particular type of pastors, they literally wanted to take the Bible and be like, mhm, what's your name? Okay, what's your name, Abigail? Okay, Abigail. I'll put Abigail on this Bible. Mhm. Alright, we got Abigail on this Bible, amen. That's how they were. And then they'll give you the Bible and tell you to go read the entire Bible from front to back. And get right with God, and do it now. But, but pastor, I gotta, I gotta go to work. What work? I, and listen, I've, I've, I've grown up around a lot of pastors, man. I've grown up around a lot of pastors. So, I've seen it all, but all I'm gonna say is this, my personal advice is, I don't want you to feel crushed by trying to be perfect. It is important to serve, but serve in a capacity that allows you to be a joyous person, allows you to be, allows you to still be you, in a sense. Don't try to, you know, change your ways, I've seen people who, uh, literally get into the faith of Christianity, and they change their ways, and they try to, you know, they try to literally, uh, the friends that have been there for them in the beginning and stuff like that, they, they change on them to the point where it's just like, I don't know, you eat your food wrong, and you're demonic, and it's just like, come on, man, like, can I live? Right, can I live? So, all you can do is pray to God and ask him to allow you to serve in a capacity that allows you to enrich your faith and to enrich your, enrich your community, in a sense. And I hope that, I hope this answer kinda helps you out, I just don't want you to try to be like, oh, my gosh, I'm right here, but I'm not right there, so I need to get right there, right now. Oh, my gosh, I gotta do whatever I gotta do to get right there, cuz, you know, that's where, that's where God is, and it's just like, you can do your best, but just take your time. Take your time, you'll get there. It's okay. But it's fine. But trust me, you probably, you probably serving better to me. I'm slow. I'm slow, so whatever you think, just understand, I'm slow. I'm slower than you. Amen. TCR, you're a thousand percent, you're right, I've been doing written goals here recently, and it's helping more in my electronic list. Sometimes writing things is better. You gotta have a book, and you can write it down. I'm gonna call you Abby. I don't know how I feel about that. I don't know how I feel about that, but we gonna have a conversation, we gonna have a conversation, Tech Coach Ralph, for real. We gonna have to talk, alright? Says Abby stopped by after work, and we could study. Guys, we literally, for real, we supposed to be studying, we supposed to be in the Bible, and this is what Tech Coach Ralph does, we're, we're supposed to be in Bible study, enriching ourselves in God's work, and here he come in here talking about, Abby, I'm gonna need for you to stop, I have to work, so we can, so we can study together. With the googly eyes, like, I'm gonna pray for you tonight. I'm gonna pray for you tonight, for real. I'm super late, but congrats, guys, it's definitely working behind the scenes, and we definitely have to trust God through it all, thank you so much. Junior Largy, man, I appreciate you, and most definitely, we gotta trust him, man, we do have to trust him. Who am I? You're right, though, I appreciate that, you're typical, I typically default to not wanting to be in eternal flames, so it's what keeps me on the narrow road, and, you know, that's how it is for all of us, like, you know, I'll just say this for recent events, you know, I understand that certain people wanna talk about certain subjects and, you know, give their opinions, but at the same time, I don't wanna be in eternal flames. I don't wanna be in eternal flames, so I just pray, and I just be like, hey, man, pray for you. Pray for your family, I pray for everything that's going on, but at the same time, I'm not gonna be the one that's gonna be, you know, giving off my authentic thoughts and then being fired, I'm just gonna, I gotta answer to God someday. When my number is called, and I gotta go home, I don't want that to be something I gotta answer for, so. Not you, thank you, I about to say. I'd say, TCR is just a bully, I have, I have sides to go with the pasta, though. What goes with pasta? What goes with pasta? Is it like a chicken pasta? You're doing like broccoli. Yeah, broccoli, that'd be good, that'd be good. That's what the pastor said to Abigail, that's true. Garlic, garlic bread, garlic bread, man. Oh, man, I appreciate y'all, so let's go ahead and get into the final verse for tonight, the final verse for tonight, and I hope you all still have your Bibles open. So we gonna go to Romans 8:28. Let's go to Romans, let's close up Psalms here. Let's go to Romans 8. There's gotta be a quicker way to get to this, I'm gonna figure this out, I like this software, but you know, I, I gotta do better on, on the quickness for this. Romans 8:28. Let me go highlight, there we go, verse 28. I'm gonna keep that green, and then I'm also gonna check out, let's see here on the CSB. Let's do Romans 8:28. Amen. Alright, so we got both pulled up here, one in CSB, the other one in King James Version, we gonna read the King James Version first. Romans 8:28, verse 28 says, "And we know that all things work together for good to them that love God, to them who are the called according to his purpose." Verse 28 says in the CSB, "We know that all things work together for the good of those who love God, who are called according to his purpose." of those who love God, who are called according to His purpose." I'mma say this. I think that this verse right here, this is one of the most loved and misused verses in the Bible. I'mma say that. And if I'm wrong, let me know in the chat. I think that this is probably one of the most loved and misused verses in the Bible. Let me know in the chat. Am I right? Am I, do you agree or do you disagree? I think it is. Now, I want you to understand this. Paul says that if we go right here, I'mma look at the CSB for study purposes. "We know that all things work together for the good of those who love God, who are called according to His purpose." Now this doesn't mean everything that happens is good. And we all understand that through experiences that we go through. For example, cancer is not good. When we get the news of cancer, ugh, it's the worst. It's the worst news ever. Here's another one. Betrayal is not good. Nobody likes to be betrayed. Nobody likes to be stabbed in the back. As we go back to second Corinthians, Paul with the thorn, that thorn can be betrayal. Nobody likes to be betrayed. Here's another one. Grief is not good. As we're going through a lot of hurt that's going on in this world currently right now. A lot of people are feeling things. A lot of people feeling, you know, they're either grieving or they're not grieving, they're celebrating or they're not celebrating, but I'm just gonna say this. Grief is not good. But it does mean that God is able to take care of even the worst situations and weave them into His greater plan. Amen. That's what God is able to do. Ms. Freckle says, true. Thank, okay, awesome. Appreciate that. Appreciate that. Uh, y'all talking about food. Y'all still on the pasta? I'm over here on Romans chapter eight, verse 28, and y'all still talking about that pasta? So now, now you got Junior hungry. Now you got him hungry. He, he's ready for a plate. Yeah, grape juice is good, man. And now I'm hungry. This. Can you say that again? Grief is not good. I, I'mma say it again. Grief is not good. And if you disagree with me, let me know why grief is good. Grief is not good. It's not. I'll let you communicate, but like I said, cancer, if I'm just giving examples, cancer isn't good, grief isn't good. But that doesn't mean that God is able to take even those worst situations that we deal with. You know, of course, you know, we grieve when people pass away. God isn't able to take those, God's able to take those particular worst situations and weave them into a greater plan. That's what I'm saying. So the idea of grief is not good, but there is a greater plan that God is working on. We just don't see it. We don't see what he has going on. So yes, just like I'm, grief has a purpose. It's not good, but it has a purpose. Amen. Do you mean it's not good to feel grief? No. What I'm saying is the feeling of grief, like for instance, when you, when you feel, when you hear somebody that has cancer, oh man, that's not good. Oh my gosh, like, it's not good. When somebody betrays you, that's not a good feeling. Even when you grieve, whether it's for a family member, whether it's for somebody that's not even a family or somebody that you cared about. Let's just say this. Kobe Bryant, when everybody found out about Kobe Bryant, man, people grieved. That wasn't a good feeling because we know somebody is gone. We know somebody is, is gone. We'll never see them again in person. Kobe? The feeling of grief isn't good. But just like how Ms. Freckle says, but it has a purpose. It's a greater purpose because God takes those worst situations that we feel like grief in order to weave them into a better plan, into a greater plan that we just don't see. Amen. Salute to my guy Magnetar. Thank you for joining in, man. Salute to you. I knew you'd be here. I knew you'd be here. It's not good to hang on to grief. I think it's good to experience it for the time, but it's more important to move through the grief and let it go. That's true. And again, like I said, that the grief is the worst situation, put that back up, the grief is the worst situation, but there is a greater plan right behind that, that we just don't know about it, that we just don't see, that we just don't understand it. It's a greater plan. It's a greater purpose in order to move through the grief. That's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying. And I don't even eat past 8:00 PM. Man, I used to be like that. I need to get better. I need to get back on my intermittent fast. I know what you're doing. From a fitness standpoint, I need to get back into my intermittent fasting, eating. As a matter of fact, it's 10 from where I am. I need to stop eating now. I gotta cut it off, fast until the morning, do better with that, but that's awesome for you being on top of that. My guy Magnetar, thank you so much for being in the building. So you're saying it's a bad feeling, like it's outcome of a bad situation? I think, okay, let me explain it again. Okay. The situation of grief itself, of grief itself, it's not good. But again, you go through the grief itself, you process the grief itself. Doesn't matter if you lose a loved one or you lose whatever's going on. The process of grief itself, you go through those particular situations. God brings you through those worst situations for a greater plan. We just, when we're in that grief, we don't see it. We don't see it. But when we get through it, when God guides us through it, there is a greater plan. There is a greater purpose. If you see what I'm saying. There's a greater purpose through that. As we look back at verse 28, "We know that all things work together for the good." All things work together. The grief, we don't like it, but it's a greater plan. It's working together. Cancer, it's not a good feeling, understanding that somebody has cancer, but we work through that for the greater plan. "All things work together for the good of those who love God, who are called according to His purpose." That's what I'm saying. If you look at how many people said they decided to go to church this past weekend after what happened to CK. That's a, that's an example. That's an example. That's an example. More than likely, a lot of these people hadn't been in church in like 10 years, but they decided to show up, show up because of CK. There's a greater purpose. We just don't know it yet. We're too busy fighting other battles, but we just don't know it yet. But, uh, it sounded at first like grief is, is bad. And again, I was getting into it, again. See student, man. See student explanation. I'm sorry. But thank y'all for holding me accountable. This is what I'm asking for. So as we move on, I want y'all to think about a, um, I don't know if y'all in y'all family, like y'all got big mama or grandmama or whatever the case may be, you know, they got those tapestries or they got those quilts in your family. You see them on the couch and you know, it's different type of quilts with different type of patches or whatever the case may be. I want y'all to think about that, right? Think about that quilt. Up close, you're gonna see all the threads, like whether it's the big thread or small thread. They all look random, super messy. It, it's one of those like quilts. Them old quilts. Y'all know what I'm talking about. The one big mama put on her shawl and I put on as a shawl, walk around the house with. I want y'all to think about that. And when you look at it, look at it up close, you're gonna see all those, those random, them messy disconnected threads going in and out and looking, you know, it looked like it needed to be washed about 10 times. That's what it looks like. But when you take a step back from it, you take a step back from big mama's quilt that's sitting on the couch and it's been there for years upon years. And when you were in there at five years old, right? When you take a step back and take a look at that quilt from afar, you're gonna see the intricate design, the overall design of it all. So up close, it looked bad. Looked like, you know, she's like, oh gosh, that's just big mama, big mama quilt. But when you take a step back, it's just like, oh man. Man, that thing looks dope. Like from a design perspective, it looks good. This is exactly how our lives look in God's hands. Amen? What feels random or painful up close, or even in that moment, is being stitched together for the good and His glory. Amen? So that's, that's the point I'm trying to make with this, the particular verse with verse 28. We have to understand that even in the moments of our lowest moments, even in the moments of our disgust, even in the moments that we're broken, that we're disconnected. When we take that step back, just like how God does, when we take that step back and look at the overall design, we understand that we're being stitched together in certain ways. And we also have to be stitched together even with the bad. The bad is gonna stitch us, that bad situation is gonna forever be a part of us and it's gonna be stitched together with us in order for us to be better in the future, in order for us to have that better, better outlook, in order for us to be in our purpose, our greater purpose in the future. We just don't see it right now because we're, it's too close. But when we take that step back, we know that all things work together for His good, for the good of those who love God. Amen? I think that even though it's working together for a greater good, it's still appropriate to feel bad slash sad about the situation, like looking slash waiting for the greater good. And that's true. And you're a thousand percent right. It's appropriate to feel, you're going to feel bad. You're going to feel sad. Take me for an example. I was sad about not getting that opportunity, but I didn't understand the greater good that was coming months later. In that moment, I couldn't see it because it was just too close. I'm just seeing, why did I not get this? Why didn't I not get this particular position? Why me, God? Why, why am I disqualified? That's how it looked to me. But when I finally leaned on God and I took that step back, then I was able to see the bigger picture that there was another opportunity coming. I just didn't know it. The greater plan, the greater good. Amen? Amen. I appreciate y'all's interactivity, man. Thank y'all, man. Cause this is, this is the reason why I wanted to do this tonight. Because I wanted to have communication and I wanted to have authentic conversation with y'all as we're going through scripture and we're talking about particular things. Even if we look at purpose here, wanna look at purpose here, even from the Bible study perspective, purpose, purpose, plan, setting forth. And if we look at, if we look at the Hebrew, so it's purpose, plan, setting forth, setting forth a plan. And there's multiple times within the Bible, even if we look at the ESV translation of when purpose is being used. Even if we look at Acts chapter 11, verse 23, "When he came and saw the grace of God, he was glad and he exhorted them all to remain faithful to the Lord with steadfast purpose." Purpose is such a strong word. And it's important for us to understand the overall purpose. Amen? So I want y'all to understand this, and this is just the overall, overall view of things. God is working even when we can't see it. That is literally, that is literally the overall stitch, like the overall weaving of these particular scriptures. As we're looking at Romans chapter eight, verse 28, uh, as we were looking at uh, second Corinthians, chapter 12, and we were looking at Psalms 34. The overall weaving thread between all of these particular scriptures is this. God is working even when we can't see it and even when we don't feel it, we still have to declare it in faith. If you don't take anything else from tonight's conversation, you have to understand that God is working. Period. I don't like saying period like that, cause you know, but it's just, I gotta put that emphasis at the end. God is working. That's it. Mic drop. When we don't see it, when we don't believe, when we're at our lowest, when we're in the lowest valleys, God is working. When we blame Him for everything, when we act like He's not listening, God is working. Like there's no, there's nothing more to say. Like that's, that's the we, that's the thread between all three of those. When we're hurt, when we're broke, busted and disgusted, God is working. Amen. Amen. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. You were just being selfish in that case. I wasn't being selfish. I was just trying to, I was, I was, I was trying to massage. I was trying to get there. I was trying to get there, you know, I'm, I'm slow. I, 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 I'll get better with my Bible study, you know, conversations and, you know, being able to weave things like that. This is all on learning purpose. Okay? Okay? Salute to my guy Story Driven Thomas. I made it just in time. Thank you so much, man. I appreciate you for being here. We just kicking back, being in, being in the Word. We not talking about any type of cultural reactions, no, nothing like that. It's been, I don't know about you, but it's been a long week for me and I think it was just appropriate to just say, forget what's going on, forget about what happened, forget about what ABC did and all these particular type of stuff. Let's get into the Word. Let's have a conversation. Let's align our hearts and minds on God's word. Cause we, we gotta take a step back. Plus, at the same time, I didn't go to Bible study, so I wanted to study the Bible with y'all. Okay? So I'm holding myself accountable while y'all hold me accountable, amen. So, man, thank you so much, man. Y'all, salute to my guy Story Driven Thomas, man. I appreciate you for being here, man. Thank you so much. Amen. Thank you so much. That, that's just it. God is working. God is working. Amen. So now, as we, as we wrap this up, I just wanted to be transparent with y'all, okay? I wanna be transparent with y'all before we get into our Q and A section. If you happen to have any questions, please feel free to put them in the chat. We're gonna spend some time, you know, uh, in the last 15 minutes or so, we gonna have some Q and A, we gonna have some questions because I do know that Tech Coach Ralph has smoke for me. That's what he said, Californian smoke. I don't know what that means, but he has smoke for me, so I'm waiting on that smoke, but I wanna be transparent with y'all as best as possible. And I try my best to be transparent. I try my best to, um, just be my authentic self. Amen? I've had struggles where I've, I've just begged God to just take it all away. I'mma go full screen here. I've had struggles where I just, I've asked God to just take it all away. You could take that as you will, as you will, but I've, I've been there. I've been in particular situations where, um, I was just done with it all. I was done with it all. I wasn't disciplined. I wasn't good with my health. Uh, I was discouraged. I was measuring myself to others and saying I was inadequate. I wasn't right. And I was feeling those, I was feeling those pains, especially in my twenties and I, honestly, I drowned a lot of it in alcohol. I drowned a lot of it in alcohol and I wasn't right. And I asked. And I asked God to take it away from me. And He didn't remove it. He didn't remove it. But when you've, but as we discussed in that particular, as we discussed in 2 Corinthians, my grace is sufficient. We all have those moments, He may not say those exact words to you, but we have those moments that literally just hit you like a freight truck, where you are reminded that His grace is sufficient. We have those moments where we are reminded that His grace is sufficient. I have a moment right now that I'm not willing to share, but it was literally a moment where I even recently where I felt like I was inadequate. I felt like I wasn't right. I felt like I wasn't doing what I needed to do for my family. I felt like I was inadequate, but then He reminded me recently that His grace is sufficient. And it made me realize something, like if I, if I hadn't struggled, if He had removed that struggle from me instantly, like, like this, if He had just removed it from me, then I would have never understood it. I might not have learned how to lean on Him more than I should. And it's tough. It's tough. So that's, that's how I know He's present in my hurt. Because even when I'm hurt, His presence sustains me. And I hope that He sustains you because, like I said, through it all, through whatever you're going through, through whatever, you know, mishaps that you've gone through, through whatever discouragements that you've gone through, through whatever brokenness that you're going through right now, we have to understand God is working, even when He doesn't wanna take that thorn out of you. God is working. And I want us to understand that. I really want us to understand that. Amen? Amen. So, listen, if you don't take anything else from what we talked about tonight, and I appreciate y'all for sticking it out with me, I want you to understand this. God's grace is enough for you. God is working. God is near the brokenhearted. God is working all things together for your good. You have to remember that. And the last thing, you are not alone in your hurt. He is there for you. He is with you, and He is working, and He will carry you through. Amen? Amen? So so I'm gonna open this up for some Q and A. If y'all got any questions in the chat, man, feel free to, you know, throw it in there, man. I appreciate you. And I'm ready for the smoke. I apologize for getting a little emotional. But that's just how, that's just how good God is, man. That's just how good God is, man. So, and I'm not, I'm not afraid to tell it. I'm not afraid to, to say it anymore. I used to be afraid, but I'm not afraid anymore. So, and I wear my heart on my sleeve. That's just what it is, man. So, Junior said, I've been there too, asking God to just take me or leave me alone, just like when Job said, said it in, Job, chapter 7, verse 14 through 16. You know what? I'm gonna pull this up here. I'm gonna pull this up here. Here we go. Job. There we go. Let's close this up. Job, chapter 7, verses 14 through 16. "Then thou scarest me with dreams and terrifies me through visions, so that my soul closeth strangling in death rather than my life. I loathe it. I would not live away, always. Let me alone, for my days are vanity." That's powerful, big dog. That's powerful. I'm gonna read this in ESV for, for Miss Freckles. I'm gonna read this for Miss Freckles. This is for Miss Freckles, not for me, alright? Don't think this is for me. This is for Miss Freckles. Alright? I'm being for real. "Then you scare me with dreams and terrify me with visions, so that I would choose strangling in death rather than my bones. I loathe my life. I would not live forever. Leave me alone, for my days are a breath." Some powerful stuff, big dog. That's some powerful stuff, man. And we've, we've all been there, man. We've all been there. And it's, it's tough. It's tough, but I just know that I'm not alone. Because if that was the case, then, then all, all y'all would not be here and all the 16 people that are watching this currently right now, and I appreciate each and every one of y'all for being here. If I was alone, then it would be nobody in here. There's that. Hey, hey, no crying in here. Don't make all this weird, but seriously, I've been at that exact spot. Listen, um, I didn't, listen, I didn't let it, I didn't let it shed. I felt it and I just said, alright, cool. I sucked it all back in because I know Tech Coach Ralph is watching, alright? And he got smoke for me, so therefore I needed to, you know, suck it all in and get back right. Keep my composure. There it is, so. Alright, I'm good. Thank you for keeping me accountable. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Salute to my guy, Magnatar. If I had all the sounds, I would play all the sounds for you, but I don't have all that, so salute to my guy, Magnatar. Y'all give, man. Salute to my guy, Magnatar in the chat. Thank you so much for contributing into this, man. Thank you so much for pouring into this ministry, man. Thank you so much for believing in me, big dog. And he leaves a message, Ecclesiastes, chapter 12, verse 13. We gonna read it. We gonna read it for you. Can I search from right here? Yep. Oh, that makes it even better. What was I doing? What was I doing? Now let's go to chapter 12. I'm gonna figure out this program. It's, it's very extensive. It's called Logos. It's very extensive. I like it, but I need to figure it out. I need to figure it out, cause I'm slow. Ecclesiastes, chapter 12, verse 13 says, "Let us hear the conclusion of the whole matter. Fear God and keep my, keep His commandments, for this is the whole duty of man." Even verse 14, "For God shall bring every work into judgment with every secret thing, whether it be good or whether it be evil." Amen. Amen. Thank you for that verse, man. I appreciate you for that, man. Thank you for pouring into this, man. I salute to you, big dog. Salute to you, man. Salute to you. Amen? So Rod Brown's trying to know what that verse says. Hey, cut it out, man. Listen, stop it. Stop it. I know what it says, but I'm doing that for Miss Freckles. Alright? Miss Freckles wanted to know what it said in ESV. Just like how I read for King James, I'm gonna read ESV from Miss Freckles, so. Instigating, alright? And where's the smoke? I'm ready for the smoke. This is Q and A session, man. Let, let me know, um, let me know, uh, oh boy. Oh boy. You want, listen, first off, you're too kind, man. You, you are definitely the thorn in my side, big dog. You're definitely the thorn in my side. But you, you got, you want smoke. Alright, man. First off, salute to you, man. You've, uh, you are the forever thorn in my side that I cannot take out, but you want the link. Alright, I'm gonna drop the link. Here we go. Here we go. Give me a minute here. Here we go. There we go. He wants the link. We gonna drop it. Tech Coach Ralph wants smoke. He wants to bring the smoke, so therefore he's gonna come up for the smoke. But salute to you, my guy. I appreciate y'all. I appreciate each and every one of y'all for being here as we wait for Tech Coach Ralph to come up with the smoke. I'm gonna read the rest of the comments. Y'all got something against ESV? I don't have anything against ESV. I don't have nothing against it. Smoke Coach Ralph, yep, yep. But, well, listen, as we waiting for Tech Coach Ralph to come in, if you have any questions, this is also Q and A session before we wrap up. If you happen to have any questions, I know we were, we were answering questions throughout the entire Bible study. And hopefully, how did you enjoy this Bible study? Was it interactive? Did you feel like you gained something out of this, man? Just let me know how y'all feel about this, because you know, I, I wanna do this more. I wanna be able to help y'all out even more as I'm helping myself, because I do wanna get better with Bible studies, because at the end of the day, I want to enrich y'all as a community. I want to enrich y'all as a community. Amen? Amen. I appreciate y'all so much, man. So we got smoke Coach Ralph in the building. Let me go ahead and get ready for go ahead and get ready for smoke Coach Ralph, man. Let me, uh, here we go.
What's up, Rod Brown? How's it going?
Ralph?
Can you hear me? Oh, am I muted?
I got you, man.
Alright, coach, making sure. How's it going? How's it going?
It's good.
Alright, perfect.
What you got for me?
First and foremost, I want to tell you congratulations on your new position.
Thank you.
I know how salty you were a few months ago, and I told you, don't even worry about it. You have no, you don't know why things happen, stuff like that. And then the other day, you're like, oh, by the way, uh, boom. I'm like, oh, really? I, I don't believe it. Congratulations. I am very, very proud of you.
Thank you.
Now, for the smoke. So, here's the deal, Mr. Rod Brown. Yeah, and I said mister, with all due respect, right? Why is it that this past Sunday, right, my parents come over and we're having a conversation about, you know, what happened last week? And my mother says, oh yeah, I saw that on Rod Brown's channel. And I was like, I'm like, what? What are you talking about? She's like, yeah, he was talking about that last week. I'm like, oh, okay. So you know what he talks about on his channel, but you have no idea what I talk about on my channel. Alright, I got you. I got you. Now, now, to add insult to injury, when I get back home today from jiu-jitsu, right? And she's like, I thought he normally goes live on, on Wednesdays, but it's Thursday. I'm like, no, it's Wednesday. She's like, oh, silly me. And I'm like, how do you know that? So, that, that, that's, that's my, that's my smoke for you, Mr. Rod Brown.
So
Why does my mom know what you talk about on your channel, but she doesn't know what I talk about on my channel?
Okay. So I'm, I'm gonna clarify this. So first off, salute to, uh, to Mama Ralph. I'm, I'm gonna nickname her Mama Ralph, alright? Salute to Mama Ralph, y'all. Y'all give shout out to Mama Ralph in the chat, man. Um, I love Mama Ralph. I appreciate her for, uh, being a supporter of the channel, even an early supporter. For those who are early supporters, man, like before, before I went faceless, or I was faceless per se, Mama Ralph was supporting me, so, uh, thank you so much. That means a lot. To answer your question, I'm not gonna be disrespectful, but maybe your mama loves me, man. Maybe your mama loves me. That's just what it is, man. Like, listen, I, listen, man, I just, your mama loves me.
Yeah, it's in her home. Like, you can go.
And so do I. It's, it's fine. It's cool. It's cool. I understand. You don't have to be salty about it, but just understand that maybe your mama loves me. And so do I. Salute to Mama Ralph.
Yeah. But yeah, that, that was, that was my, my smoke for you. My California-sized wildfire smoke for you, Rod Brown. Like, I was, I was, I was appalled. I'm like, you don't know anything I say on my channel. Like, how do you know what he's talking about on his channel? So, you know? Yep. That, 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 now it's, you know, I was like, alright, I see how it is. I see how it is.
Listen, listen, all are welcomed here, you know? All are welcome to, uh, listen to what I have to say, you know, even if I don't say anything at all, but, uh, just know that we as a community here, we know what you say on your channel. Even I know what you say on your channel. Then I'll be paying attention to your channel even more now because of my new particular position, so therefore you have a bigger role in my life, so therefore I'm gonna need you to bring more heat in order for everybody else like me, like Junior, like others, in order for us to be successful in our lives. So you have a bigger responsibility on your hands now.
You know, I built her an app, apparel app, where I manage her apparel for the organization she works for, and she watches your channel, and she doesn't watch mine. I don't get it. I don't, I don't get it.
Listen, you built, you built the app for her.
And then she watches your channel? Why you?
No, no. You built the app for her, for her to tell you to do it for her. That's what, that's what she did. That's what you did. So literally, you built the app in order for you to help her out, but she wants you to do it. That's what you did. You just made your job easier because you're gonna do it anyway.
Yeah. Anyways, Brad Brown.
Yep.
That was, that was my smoke. That was, that was all the smoke that I had. So, but congratulations on your role, and, um, I hope you learn AI.
Listen, I, listen, I know AI. We're gonna, we're gonna have a conversation, we're gonna have a conversation about it and how it, uh, relates to my particular role, especially in the healthcare industry, um, because there's some things that's coming down the pipeline that's changing, but we not gonna talk about that here. We gonna save it for, we gonna save it for your channel. And hopefully, and hopefully your mom, hopefully your mom will tune in because I'm there.
That's a good point. You know what? Maybe you have to come on my channel more often then.
I'm helping you out because, listen, listen, your mama loves me, and I love your mama. So therefore I'm gonna come over to your platform in order for her to watch it, alright? So
That sounds fair to me. That sounds fair. You know what? If you're free Saturday afternoon, come to Vibe Coding Show and, uh, tell us about what this role consists of with AI part of it, so we can start brainstorming and plotting and scheming.
Alright, I'll see what I can do.
Cool. Well, that's it. That's all I had. So, but congrats again. Keep up the good work.
Appreciate it, man. Salute to Tech Coach Ralph, man. Y'all go follow, follow my guy. Salute to him, and I appreciate you so much.
Later.
Alright. So that was Tech Coach Ralph with all the smoke that he had for me. Listen, I can't help, I can't help it that, that my voice is eloquent, that my, uh, that my talk is, you know, concise to the point that, hey, listen, mamas love me. I can't help it. And I love all the mamas in Christ. There it is, man. There it is. So, oh my gosh, I got another, I got somebody else that wants smoke with me or has some questions for me. Oh boy. Let's go ahead and get into it. So I want to introducing my guy Story Driven Thomas. How you doing, man?
How you doing?
Man, doing good, man, doing good. Just, just hanging out tonight, doing a little Bible study, man, doing a little.
I seen, man. I seen Ralph got on, and I'm jealous. I haven't told my mom about your channel yet, so.
Oh, man, I, I cannot. I can't.
Well, I have two things. First of all, I'm so proud of you, man, staying consistent with your channel. I know it's not easy. You know, I have a few channels sent, never consistent, so maybe one day God is get me consistent with mines. Uh, but I just wanted to, um, you know, give you your flowers, man. I really appreciate that every week when I want to check out some new content from you is there, and I really think that, um, it's a blessing to a lot of people out there. Second thing, I do have a question, and, um, I'm hoping that if others out there are watching the live, sometimes they may, and you kind of talked about this already, but just get a little bit more food from thought. When life isn't going your way, or if the world is not going the way that you think it should, do you have any scriptures or any thoughts as Christians of how we should deal with those feelings? And you know, there's a lot going on right now. And, uh, as Christians, how should we deal with the stress that life can bring us when things aren't going our way? Maybe I should have typed that to you first so you could think about it.
No, 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 that's a good one. That's a good one, because it's actually, um, it's actually a video that I'm putting together now, uh, with my Back After Sin series, talking about being, uh, let's just say discouraged or feeling like God is silent, feeling like God just doesn't hear me at all. So one of the scriptures that I was studying was, um, Hebrews four, verse sixteen. And let me see if I can, um, can I do a screen share duel? Give me a minute. Give me a minute.
The Hebrews four sixteen?
Yes. Can I do the duel here? Let's do the duel. Let's get you up here. Hold on just a minute. I'm trying to do the duel screen.
No worries.
So we gonna share this screen, okay? And then we gonna come right here. At the screen. Alright. Can you hear me? Okay.
I'm looking at it now, too.
Let's see here. So it's gonna be Hebrews. Hebrews four. I don't know why I didn't type in here, uh, the beginning. I was sitting here searching the hard way. But I'm learning. I'm learning. Hebrews four, chapter sixteen, or not, verse sixteen, excuse me. "Let us therefore come boldly into the throne of grace, that we may obtain mercy and find grace to help in time of need." And even in the ESV, we'll read that here, verse sixteen. "Let us then with confidence draw near to the throne of grace, that we may receive mercy and find grace to helps in time of need." That verse is powerful to me. And I feel like that verse is powerful with me because the truth is, the truth of the matter is this. And like I said in this Bible study, God isn't pushing us away. He's drawing us closer. He's drawn, he's embracing us in our weaknesses, but sometimes we just don't understand it. And my question to you would be, when do you most need mercy and grace from God?
When do, uh, me personally or just us?
Like just like us as Christians or even you personally, like, when do you feel like you most need mercy and grace?
Well, I would probably say that a lot of not the right word, but we get lax on our dedication to reading the Word, praying, you know, a lot of our duties as Christians. And, um, and 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 also when we backslide, you know? So, I mean, we're always in need of this verse, really. We're always in need of it, yeah.
But guess what? Even in those particular moments, let's just take the backslide and backslid moment, because a lot of people, a lot of people backslide. But even in that moment, guess what? God still says, "Come boldly." Come boldly. He's not telling you to come to punish you. He's actually saying, "Just come polly." That's it. So I, yeah, so I I think that's important, man. I was really enamored by that scripture as I was, uh, as I was going through this, as I was, um, you know, getting this prepared for the, because I'm truly enjoying this particular series, and those who haven't, who haven't, uh, looked at this particular series, it's the Back After Sin. I got a playlist for y'all, you know, I still got videos that I'm putting in there, but I got a couple more videos I'm dropping for this series, but when I was studying Hebrews, chapter four, this this verse stuck out to me, and, um, man, I love it. I love it. So.
Thank you, man. I'm gonna let somebody, if you have somebody else on the line, I'm gonna let them get in, but like I said, man, I'm proud of you and, um, really praying that you can keep going, and I'm so thankful for your ministry.
Man, thank you so much, man. I appreciate you, uh, first off, I appreciate you for believing in me. I appreciate you for being a brother that, uh, that I can call on personally. For those who know, I can call him personally, and we can have conversations, and you keep me accountable. And that's what I stress about a lot, having brothers or sisters in your life that can keep you accountable, rather that's being in the Word or keeping you accountable in things in your life, and you are one of them, and I appreciate that. And please, everybody, please go check out his channel, and you know, we also did a collab together, which was awesome. Which was so awesome.
I had so much fun doing that, yeah.
We had awesome climbing that mountain, so we did a, we did a fantastic job, and I appreciate you for, um, for your guidance. I just want to tell you that.
My Christian channel. I just, I'm always on this one when I'm on your lives because I have my YouTube read.
Got you, man, so.
So people know. But, uh, but yeah, thank you, man. I'm gonna get out of here so the next person can gob on.
Alright, I appreciate you, man. Thank you. Alright, man. I'm gonna check the chat before we get up on, get on up out of here, man. I appreciate all y'all for being here, and I hope that this Bible study was very fruitful. Listen, I I feel like we accomplished a night, a lot tonight, even without doing segments. I feel like we did a lot of community building. I feel like we did a lot of, uh, personal building here tonight, and we were just having conversations, just being in the Word. And I feel like, man, that's fruitful. That is definitely fruitful, man. So salute to y'all, man. Salute to Tech Coach Ralph. Salute to Story Driven Thomas for coming on here tonight, man. I'm gonna read some of, read some of these chat messages before we close up into some prayer, and if you happen to have any questions, feel, go ahead and drop them in there. Go ahead and drop them in there. Giving some feedback to me, yes, even though I was late. Hey, listen, you were, um, you were that, um, you were that particular member that whenever they come into church late, you know that when church starts, and that member that walks in after offering, before the hymnal, before the, uh, before the sermon, they walk in through the door and they and you sit in the back, that's you. But guess what? You still here. You still here, man, so that's all that matters. Um, it was a great study. Thank you, man. Thank you. I'm trying to get better, man. Maybe we can collab on some studies too, because I know you do a lot of studies, uh, Junior and Largy, so maybe we can work on something together, man, because I wanna, I wanna have, you know, more brothers and sisters within Christ to just build this community, and we can build up a study, study session together, and Q and A session together, man. Like, I'm open to a lot of things. Great for sure. Great for sure. Thank you, Ms. Freckles. I hope it was fruitful for you as well, too. Thank you so much. Man, salute to you, T, man. Much love for being here, man. Much love to my friends. Much love to you for actually joining in and actually, uh, participating here tonight, man. And hopefully, um, this has been fruitful for you, and hopefully, you know, you can be able to re-watch this if you, you know, came in here late like Magnatar. But it doesn't matter, you know, we can re-watch this on the restream, and hopefully this Bible study can be fruitful to anybody else, man. So thank you for being here. Hey, Mama Ralph. Hey. Hey, Mama Ralph, how you doing? Hold on, I gotta, I gotta get my. Hey, Mama Ralph, how you doing, man? You doing alright? That's good, man. I, I listen, I I appreciate you for being here. I thank you so much for watching my, for watching my, you know, my channel, man, like, ah, you, you've been here from the beginning. Oh, really? Aw, you too sweet, man. You don't, don't say that. Thanks, man. I just, I just know I appreciate you more. Thank you so much. I appreciate you, Mama Ralph. Now, now TCR, now Tech Coach Ralph gonna have forever have smoke with me, man, so. Yes, she definitely raised Coach well. Yep, that's true. She definitely did. She definitely did. She's not interested in tech. No, she is. She is. She's interested. She's interested. HI Coach Ralph, that's, yes, sir. Yes, sir. Oh, man. Make sure the flowers have a few thorns. Hmm, that's true. They got some. They definitely got some, man. They definitely got some, man. Proverbs, chapter twenty-four, verse sixteen. "For a just man fall seven, seven times and riseth up again, but the wicked shall fall into mischief." Thank you so much. You always dropping dope verses, Junior. Salute to you, man. Salute to you. The story of Joseph is a reminder to hold on also. That's absolutely true, man. God bless you. No, God bless you. God bless you all. Thank you so much, man. Holding up that one finger. Hey, you, you know, you know that one lady that would come in in the back of the church, or they walk in the middle aisle, but like, I don't, I never understood what the one finger meant. Like, what is the one finger? Like, they walking down the aisle? Oh, man, listen, I'm trying to tell you, man. I'm trying to tell you, listen. Salute to Mama Ralph, man. I listen, I I appreciate you, Mama Ralph. Thank you. Your support is undeniable. It's undeniable, and it shows. So I appreciate you. You raised a phenomenal son. No, stop it. No, your son is, your son is phenomenal. You're phenomenal, because you're phenomenal. You're phenomenal. Don't let anybody else tell you otherwise. Amen. Amen. Salute to Mama Ralph. Amen. Oh, man. Let me quit. Let me quit. Hey, don't, hey, don't revoke the YouTube premium, man. I appreciate you, alright? I appreciate you, but listen, man, we gonna, we gonna, hey, I heard when the one finger came from my dad, listen, that one finger, that was, that was the thing in churches. That probably still is the thing, man. That still is the thing, but oh, boy, listen, we gonna go ahead and get up, I'm gonna go on up out of here. I kept y'all here for at least two hours, and I know some of y'all got to go to bed, and you heard YouTube Premium is now officially remote. Nah, it's still there. It's still there. Listen, it's it's still there. I know it's still there. Don't worry about that. Don't worry about it, man, so. Don't worry. So we gonna go ahead and close up, man. We gonna go ahead and close up in some prayer, so, dear God, man, thank you so much, man. Thank you. Thank you so much for tonight. Thank you so much for this Bible study. Thank you so much for this fellowship. Oh, gosh, we had a, a great time here tonight. We fellowship in your Word, and we had a, we had three fantastic scriptures that we went through, that we studied, that we talked about, and we had phenomenal questions from everybody. Salute to everybody that was here tonight. God bless each and everybody that was here tonight. God bless Tech Coach Ralph. God bless Ms. Freckles. God bless Junior and Largy, Story Driven Thomas, Magnatar, T, everybody who was here tonight. Mitch, Mitch, thank you so much for your presence, and for those who I did not name, and for those who were just in the background watching this, I hope that this word was a blessing to you as it fore it was for me. So let the words in my mouth and let the meditation of my heart be acceptable in thy sight, oh Lord, my strength and my redeemer. May everybody have a fantastic week. May for everybody continue to walk down God's path. Even if you're in your valleys, just understand that God is working. God is forever working. God will not forsake you. He is there for you because he loves you. And remember, my grace is sufficient. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. 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 Listen, thank y'all so much, man. Thank y'all so much. Before we, before we close up the stream, I want to give y'all some updates. So hopefully, this has been a blessing to y'all, and I'm gonna see, get some feedback in the community chat. If y'all enjoyed these, enjoyed this particular Bible study livestream. I will try to do one next week, but I do know in a couple of weeks I will definitely be out of town, so I will try to see if I could do a, um, pre-recorded livestream to try to, you know, try to keep y'all up to speed on your Bible study and this, that, and the third, or we'll probably make it up in some type of way, shape, or form. I will definitely, definitely try to keep you up to date, but if you truly enjoyed this particular livestream, please do me a quick favor. Make sure you hit a like button on the way out, and if you're new here, please subscribe if you enjoy this faith-based content, and please share this with your family and friends, because I don't want to keep this to myself. I don't want to keep this to myself. I don't want to keep God's Word to myself. I want us to be a blessing to each other. Amen. And if you ever have any questions or you need some prayer, please feel free to email me. My email is open. I am open to prayers. I want to pray for everybody, because at the end of the day, I'm here for you. Amen. So with that being said, thank y'all so much for being here. I hope this has been fruitful. My name is Rod Brown. For those who don't know, and I appreciate y'all for being here. Thank y'all so much. I'm gonna see y'all again later. Peace.